Hello.
Hello.
I'm trying to advance what's on the screen and then I realized, oh, I'm not the one in charge. Evening, Doctor. How are you?
Are you muted there, Dr. Bard?
I'm fine, Ron. Didn't realize I was muted.
Stretching my back.
Good evening, Dr. Bard.
Good evening. You're smiling.
Everyone. It's 5:30, so we will begin. And is Ryan available?
Yes, I am here.
Ryan, would you conduct a poll to make sure that we have a quorum?
Yes. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Clary.
Here.
Commissioner McKinney. Commissioner McKinney will not be able to make it today. She let us know that in advance. Commissioner Lindy.
Right here.
Councilmember Byer. Ryan. Oh, there she is. Councilmember Duval.
I saw him.
All right. Dr. Adderbury.
He's not on yet.
Okay. Yakima Health District Staff, Andre Fresco.
Here, good evening.
Myself, Ryan Iback, Chase Porter.
Here, good evening.
Melissa Flitberry.
Here.
Lilian Bravo.
Here.
Ron McGee.
Here, good evening.
Nathan Johnson.
Here.
Dr. Bard.
Here.
Jocelyn Castillo.
Here.
Victoria Reyes.
Here.
James Elliott.
Good evening.
And then Dr. Adderbury, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we have a quorum, so I will bring the meeting to order. And Ryan, if you will, introduce guests and staff. You already did that on the staff part. Any guests we have?
No, we do not have any guests today.
Do we have a review of any submitted written comments?
There were no written submitted comments.
Well, special meeting guidelines. Mr. Elliott, are you online?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, so just to bring us back, we a while or so ago had added a second meeting every month that we put in the middle of the month. As you recall, we have a normal regularly scheduled meeting which happens once a month, normally at the end. We as a board decided that you would add a second meeting in order to deal with the issues that were going on. We have called that meeting a special meeting every time. And which is fine, we can do that. We send out the notice, which is appropriate. But there's something that I want to raise for the board in terms of concerns related to Open Public Meetings Act violations or allegations thereof. When you have a special meeting that's called by statute, you are required to deal with those issues that are listed on your agenda. And you cannot make any formal decisions pursuant to statute. A final disposition cannot be made on any special meeting unless it's an issue that has been identified in your agenda. So the reason why I bring this up is at times we get into discussions in regular meetings where someone will bring up a topic and ask for a final disposition or make a motion on a topic. You can do that at a regularly scheduled meeting. Those are the ones that we have at the end of the month. However, if during any of these special meetings, someone makes a decision to present an issue for final disposition that is not listed on the agenda, this board runs potentially the risk of being in violation of an Open Public Meetings Act violation. Now, the simple way to solve this problem is, to the extent that anybody has a motion that they want to have decided at the special meeting, identify such as the agenda begins. And that's normally the Friday before when Victoria sends out the draft. Identify it as an issue, ask for it to be listed as a topic on the agenda, and identify that a board decision potentially takes place. The reason why I raise this issue is while this board sits in a difficult position, having to deal with a current and ongoing litigation, and having watched some things that have happened recently around our community, most notably down in Tri-Cities, there was recently a order that got passed by a board down in Tri-Cities at a special meeting that wasn't listed on the agenda. The result for that entity now is they have now been sued for an OPMA violation. So the reason why I bring this up is obviously, as long as we continue to have special meetings, to the extent that any board member wants to bring up an issue for final disposition, that it should be listed on the agenda that goes out, that's available for the public, available for all board members to work through and discuss, so that no one can claim there was any violation related to the statute that deals with special meetings. So I know we've gone over this before, but I just want to make sure everyone is completely aware and that we don't run into any traps on this. So since this is a special meeting, I figured it'd be time for a good reminder. And if anyone has any questions or wants references to the statutes, you can look at yourself. Let me know. I'd be happy to answer that.
I have a question for you. Would it be appropriate to put in the, on the agenda, front page, a disclaimer or something to the effect that you just said that? And hopefully you can help with the language that says any, anything cannot, anything not on the agenda cannot be considered as, any motions can be taken, something to that effect.
We, we can put that on there. Obviously, just the reminder, the board members is sort of the key point, especially with tonight being a special meeting. But before the next one, again, this is as long as we continue to have the special meetings, to the extent that this board decides that you don't want to have the second meeting, obviously that resolves that issue. But as long as we continue to have them and we continue to name them as special meetings, I'm happy to put that language or help Victoria put that language on the agenda.
And another thing I wanted to bring up for some of the folks that were not here. This meeting came about back when COVID first started. We were, it was such an unknown item, an issue, and what do we do? And so we were having daily updates, not meetings, but we were having daily updates every morning when COVID first started and to keep track of what was going on. And then after a period of time when we've got a handle on stuff, this, it morphed into, not the daily meetings, but into this special once a month meeting. So just a kind of an update for folks that weren't here before.
I got a question for James.
Yeah, Dave.
Is there any way you can look back over the last, I don't know, 12 months or how many months we've been having the special meetings and then give us a summary of any motions that we passed in special meetings versus regular meetings? I don't mean to create extra work for you or we could assign it to somebody else, but I just, I think taking an inventory of where we've possibly made errors in protocol, we should correct those errors or at least make a public announcement of our errors and acknowledge them.
I think I'm going to start with the point, Dr. Adderbury, that I, I don't know that that's a good idea and put that on here because frankly, we're in the middle of an OPMA lawsuit right now and I don't want to do any homework for anybody on any of those issues. So I guess my answer would be, let's just make sure we remember what these rules are going forward so we don't run any issues.
I would just say that I concur with Mr. Elliott. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, if not, we will move on then. We have unfinished business and Director Fresco and Dr. Bard, you're up.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Good evening to the board and to anyone who's watching. I just wanted to share, and I will be brief because you'll be hearing more from experts in this area, but we are seeing a a rather precipitous drop of COVID cases in our community, which is, which is welcome news. We're seeing a reduction in the number of people hospitalized, which is welcome news. We are unfortunately still seeing people who are being sent to the ICU on ventilators and actually passing away. So it's still a very serious issue. But we have been pleased at the drop in cases that we're seeing. Our numbers were very, very dramatic during the Omicron surge and they are reducing very quickly, which again pleases us. We remain vigilant to ensure that there aren't any recurrences or we have new variants, but things are looking up in terms of that. I'll pass it to Dr. Bard and then we may hear from Ryan and Melissa as well.
Good evening. If anyone has a subscription to New York Times, they have a really great COVID action, a series of maps that goes state by state, county by county. Washington is actually one of the less hot places in the country and Yakima is about midway in Washington State. So the, all these criteria are down. So the number of cases are down, the number of hospitalizations are down, and the number of deaths are down. So you know, the mitigations are working and the only problem will be when the mask mandate goes out, there may be a blip that goes up, but it, my guess is it won't be sustained because people have either gotten natural infection and will be somewhat immune. They've had natural infection and been vaccinated, which will be super immune, or they've got a up-to-date, which means two vaccines for Pfizer Moderna plus booster. So we're in better shape than we were at the end of Delta, so optimistic. The other thing is, one of the pharmacists helped out quite a bit. And I have a sample prescription form that can be circulated to the docs in the community. And when you fill out the form for a patient who fits the criteria for post-exposure treatment, they can take it to one of 11 pharmacies in town which are identified on a website, but will circulate it in a memo so that people can start prescribing, you know, without having a lot of hoops to jump through. Now, whether or not the patients will have to pay for it or their insurance will cover it, I don't know. The COVID clinic at Memorial is up and running with it. They're offering Paxlovid, the other one, Monipirvir isn't as widely available and it doesn't work as good as the Paxlovid anyhow, has more side effects. So Trivimab, which is an IV monoclonal antibody, which prevents people who might have risk for hospitalization to have that decreased. It's tough to give because it's IV. Also, some of the newer strains aren't inactivated by it, so I don't know how long the Trivimab will be around. Remember, the Regeneron that was out earlier, Regeneron wasn't active against Omicron, so it was sort of put on the shelf. So I think the, in addition to the old public health mitigations like distancing and mask wearing and hand washing, we have now available more drug than we have people looking for it. So hopefully we are in a position now where we can send information out to the docs in the community so they can start participating in these post-exposure treatments. So it's, this is good and I will probably put the information out in one of the regular bulletins that Melissa puts together, if I'm right about that, Melissa.
Provider advisory that we send out as needed. Well, communications team, yes.
Dr. Bard, if I may add, just a word of caution. It feels very, very long ago that we actually saw the Delta surge, but we, myself included, thought that spring and summer of last year was going to be easier because people were outside, the weather was warmer. We really were anticipating a drop in cases. So I think Dr. Bard is correct about the fact that there's more resilience in the community, certainly more people have been frankly vaccinated or have natural immunity. But the reality is that we don't know what's around the corner. So I do share with you again a word of caution that if we do have a variant and there is a, another variant that is circulating, not yet to the degree that causes extreme concern, we will have to be cautious.
Yeah, I would add too, Andre, that like we talked about earlier, one of the things I think we need to publicize and encourage with the mask mandates going, you know, becoming less stringent is how vaccination, how useful vaccination is. It's, you know, we said it before, it's the best mitigation strategy we have. And if people want to be protected above and beyond, of course, they're free to wear masks. But vaccination is the key to keeping the mitigation down. If you look at the state of Colorado, they eliminated their mask mandate in the summer 2021, but they have a really high vaccination rate. So their cases are not as high as other places. Their hospitalizations are not as high and their deaths are not as high because so many people are vaccinated. So it's a good lesson.
Dr. Bard is correct. And also, we want to clarify, not just full vaccination, but also receiving the booster shot. I know that the CDC refers to that as being up to date. I think that that is too general. I think that any option to be fully vaccinated to the highest degree is necessary and that includes getting the booster. And we haven't had the, the, the full support of the community to receive that booster and we'd really like to. So we're continuing to create more outreach around that, but it would be encouraging if more people received the vaccination and booster shots because again, we are taking away a mitigation option. The, the only other thing, by the way, does, does the board have any questions for us at this time? Okay, the only other thing that I was hoping that we could do during this COVID update was to talk about the very real changes that are happening to school safety and COVID changes to protocols. So I pass this to Ryan and Melissa. Please feel free to add anything that you wish as well.
Yeah, so updated school guidance for K through 12 grades was, was, went out this, early this week. And in those guidance, there's several requirements that still exist. And then several of the requirements also went to being optional. So I was just going to quickly run down the, the list of required guidelines for the school, updated guidelines. So some of the requirements are that all employees are still required to be fully vaccinated or have an exemption. Symptomatic, required to stay home. If you do test positive, then you're required to isolate. Schools are required to have a separate room where symptomatic people can go to. And in those rooms, so whether it's a health room, a nurse room, an isolation room, people are still required to be masked in those areas. Required to notify staff if there is an exposure, required to directly notify students that are identified as immunocompromised, medically fragile, or are at high risk. Schools are required to have a process in place to inform when there are cases or outbreaks in the school. Required to ensure access to timely testing and required to still report to the local health jurisdiction. The big optional, big item that went from required to optional was the masking. And I'm not aware of any schools that are going to continue requiring masking. They're all planning on, that I'm aware of, planning on, on making it optional. But that's a rundown of, of, a quick rundown of the requirements and some of the optional parts of the updated guidelines.
Really right, if I'm not mistaken. So there was no additional guidance that came out today that changed the language in one section. So I did just send that to Victoria and ask her to send that out to all board members individually, but one of them was for if a student is isolated because they are COVID positive, they can return to school. It was strongly recommended that they wear a mask from day six to 10 or have a negative test when they return. That strongly recommended has changed to required. So they'll be required to wear a mask when they return day six through 10 unless they have a negative rapid test. And that could be an at-home test now as well.
Melissa, I don't recall when the guidance changed, but there has been a change to school buses as well, correct?
Yes, so the masking is no longer required on the school buses starting March 12th. They are just, have recommendations as far as opening windows as much as possible, spacing a student out as much as possible. We all know that school buses are cramped packed right now. So, you know, it's still, it's still recommended to wear a mask, but the recommender requirement has, has lifted for school buses. And we, Ryan and I meet weekly with school nurses and the superintendents. And so we went over all this guidance on Wednesday with the school nurses and there was, there was a lot of questions on. One of the things that is required to be done by the schools is to directly notify any immunocompromised, medically fragile, or high-risk student or staff member, you're required to directly notify them of any close contact or exposure. But the school nurses don't always know who those individuals are. If you click on the high-risk link, takes you to the CDC, it lists everything, you know, from ADHD to obesity, which obesity is a BMI of 30, which is affects a large population of students and staff within this community. So we're looking for some clarification and guidance from DOH at this point and waiting to hear back, but kind of the consensus is to just notify, you know, if you've had a class, cases within a classroom, to just notify the whole classroom that there was a case. Or they also have to report some way of letting families and parents know what, how many cases there have been within the school. So they can do that up, send by sending out emails to the family to say we've had X amount of cases this week. They can do a dashboard on their website, but they are required to keep up with letting the families know what's going on within the school for cases.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. We'll move on then to new business and back to Mr. Elliott and Ryan.
So I hope that all board members receive the CR102, which is related to the rules for establishing local boards of health. As you'll recall, 1152 was the original House Bill number. And in addition, then after that, the statute has now come into effect. Part of the statute required that the Board of Health, as the Washington State Board of Health, would draft and adopt rules that would give instruction to local boards of health and also to any legislative bodies such as Board of County Commissioners, identifying not only the process by which members shall be recruited, selected, and approved, but also identifying and giving a little bit more meat to the concept of who needs to be added and under, under what circumstances. The last time we had this discussion about a month or so ago, we were still waiting on this step, which is the CR102 in order to finalize these rules. which is the CR 102, in order to finalize these rules. Now, keep in mind the overall picture, and I know I'm probably boring people by giving this again, but by July 1st of this year, this board needs to be in compliance with the new statute. And in a sense, there will need to be a change related to this local Board of Health. We are provided the information from the Washington State Board of Health here that's found in CR 102 that describes the process, again, how to recruit, how to select, how to approve any new board members who are added. The reason why I wanted to make sure you saw this was I know there were some questions related to when the rule would go into effect, et cetera, et cetera. I watched the Washington State Board of Health meeting yesterday for a portion as they covered this issue to see if there is anything more detailed. But this proposed rulemaking that you see in CR 102 gives you the information about what is to up, what is still upcoming related to this process. By putting together this proposed rule, now it allows for the public to identify before April 1st any written comments that they have related to this proposed rule. And I'll get into it in a second, related to prior versions that we have covered. But it now opens the written comment period. Individuals can submit their written comments at the bottom of this page, you'll see it, as it carries over on to page two. It will identify more particular ways of providing the information in terms of a written comment. In addition, people within the public can also go on and register in advance for the hearing, which is April 13th of 2022. That is the next Washington State Board of Health meeting in which they will take also verbal comments related to this, if any are submitted. On April 13th, which is the next Washington State Board of Health meeting, they intend to adopt these rules as written unless there's some major written comments or problems that come up that they need to make changes. Keep in mind, this is not the effective date of the rule, and any CR 102 like this one will identify that. The intended date still of effectiveness is still looking at July 1st. So as we have talked about before, we cannot wait for this rule to become completely effective before we can implement the procedures within it. This rule, if it's adopted on April 13th without any changes, it will essentially set the stage for what boards need to do in terms of the steps. Now, as I mentioned to you the last time that we discussed this, it appeared to me, based on the rules, the proposed rule that had come out, not this CR 102, but the proposed rule had sort of tightened this up and given direction. There has been zero changes in between this CR 102, which was finally filed in February 25th. There's been no changes from this and the prior rule that we looked at before. So the good news is, nothing changes in terms of my overall advice, recommendations, process, related to what this board needs to do in order to become compliant. There are many different pieces to this rule. We've gone through them in greater detail before. Unless anybody has any questions for me about any of the particulars or steps that need to take place, I basically want to make sure you have this rule, you knew where we are in the process, you understood that the timeline that I had recommended before is still in effect, nothing changes. And it does not appear that there will be any further steps related to this other than the written comments, the adoption by the Washington State Board of Health, and then the effective date probably being July 1st as they identified. So with that in mind, I know that's a lot, but I need you to understand, nothing has changed in terms of the rulemaking process that's different from what I discussed with you a month ago, which is good news because we've been prepared for it. But now it puts us in a position where the steps need to be taken in order to start putting this board in a position that it will be compliant come July 1st. So with all of that in mind, I will stop talking and allow anyone who has any questions related to this or other issues for me, fire them away.
Mr. Elliott, this is Ron. Would it be, I would, I'm asking if you would put that, what you outlined, if you would put that in a timeline for us, update and send it out to the board?
I, I had sort of worked, Commissioner Anderson, I had worked with Ryan related to this. I did not put together a draft timeline. I'm not sure if Ryan's put one down on paper or not. We have talked about it sort of generally here, that the concept of the initial process, which is seeking the applicants, is really the next step by the local Board of Health, meaning us. But really, the first step still in the process is the determination by the county commissioners related to the need to draft a resolution or ordinance that identifies what the change in the Board of Health is going to be. So that still is the first step. But in terms of timeline, after that's done and that's completed by the BOCC, then the next step that would need to take place would be sort of that recruitment piece that the local Board of Health would do in terms of, and it lays out steps that, that we will need to do. And I will work with Ryan when we get to that point and making sure we're meeting all of those. It's essentially trying to recruit the members from each of the different areas. But our timeline, I will say, I think our original discussion, and Ryan can cover this a little bit more in detail, was we were anticipating trying to be able to begin this recruitment process sometime during this month. So we're getting closer and closer to that timeline that we need to take action, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioner Anderson, I can go ahead and go over that timeline again if you'd like.
Ryan, before you, before you do that, can we wait and see if other board members have any questions for me? And if, and if they don't, I think that makes sense, but I just want to make sure everybody knows where we're at on this process.
Anyone else have any questions?
James, James, I have, this is Dr. Cleary, I have a question. So this requires that the county commissioners form and, or create an ordinance before we can proceed?
That is correct. Dr. Cleary, within the document that we have here, it would be, let's see, one. I'm wondering whoever's running it, Jocelyn or Victoria, if you can go to the third, four, five, six. Go to the seventh page on here, keep going a little bit farther.
Jocelyn, do you mind enlarging the document on screen, please?
Stop, stop right there and we'll increase that. So if you look at subsection four here, Dr. Cleary, this up above, yeah, right there, perfect. Subsection four on this, under WAC, 24690-015. Under number four, you'll see a board, a county commissioners, county legislative authority chooses to adopt a resolution or otherwise act to change the size or composition of the local Board of Health. It tells then the process of how that's supposed to go. Now, if you will recall, our prior resolution and ordinances related to this local Board of Health identify that we would have seven members. Those are obviously the six of you and Commissioner McKinney, who's not here. There needs to be a change related to that because the seven members that we have are not completely compliant with the new statute. So there needs to be a change. That's the first answer to the question. There has to be a change. I think we've all agreed on that. Then we go to subsection four. If the county commissioners or legislative authority adopts the resolution to otherwise change the size or composition, that needs to be done by the Board of County Commissioners. And they will adopt that related to the change in the size or composition of this local Board of Health. And then it walks through A through E, which are each of the requirements related to what that resolution or ordinance needs to be. Does that make sense, Dr. Cleary?
Yes, it does. And I guess it, it all comes down to the interpretation of whether that, you know, in the synopsis, the, the statement was that this would be adding to the existing members. Because I think we eliminate, if, if the change by the county commissioners is to eliminate all of the other members besides themselves and then reform, we'll be looking at a different number of members. And we can probably not add on all of the current members. I, I think Dr. Attarberry and I would kind of cancel each other out. And there's also a concern about anybody who's actively in, in healthcare and with financial interest in healthcare. And there may be reasons why the two of us can't join or one of us can't join back in. So I, I guess I, I'm going to have to put it to the commissioners, whether there's an intent to continue the current board and do as the, the current statute says, in addition to the membership, or whether there's going to be a, a change in the number.
Commissioner Lindy had his hand up.
Yeah, if, if I could, I just wanted to let you know that we, we have made progress since the last health board meeting. There is a draft ordinance that is being, that is being worked on. And in part, it's taking, you know, the, the text you see in front of you, that the current rulemaking in, in, in account as we move forward on that. And I, I know there's going to be a time when we'll, you know, we get to a point where we'll be conferring with the health board and the health district as well. But just want to let you know that, that we are moving forward on that.
Thank you.
Anderson, I, I just was going to add that Dr. Cleary as well, that our current ordinance is silent on tribal representation. So it has to change as well, simply because what we have does not, again, meet the requirements.
And, and you're right, Director Fresco, yeah, I can't, we, we can't keep things as they are, so it'll be a change.
Yep. All right, any other comments or questions?
Well, I'm, I would just ask more plainly, I'm just curious whether the commissioners are considering a six-member board or a 10-member board?
Well, I can't speak for anyone else, but I am looking at just adding.
I can't speak for the board as, as, as a whole either, but I will say that, you know, we spoke into Mr. Elliott and spoken to our attorneys and, and they're on the same page as what needs to be done on this.
Just do all.
All of that.
Um, is there a specific, I know that July 1st is the effective date of, of this rulemaking, but is there a specific date where we're going to get into a really time crunch where it's going to be impossible to meet this requirement? If you had to pick a date?
Yeah, as I've described before, I think our process of recruiting and selecting, and then there's a follow-up step that needs to take place after that. I, I think I sort of ballparked the recruiting process. In the past, has been about a 30-day window that we've tried to do before. The selection process, and I think it's important to remember, and again, I'm, I'm just reading what the rules say here. The requirement is that the local Board of Health will do the recruiting. The local Board of Health, so cover that 30-day period, the local Board of Health will do the interview and selection process. And I sort of ballparked that, depending upon the number of applicants that we get and what the board wants to do. Probably a 30-day window for that as well. But there's a third step that then comes after the local Board of Health selects the applicants. The way the rule has been written is the local Board of Health selects the applicant. Then the successful applicant needs to be approved by a two-thirds vote of the county commissioners. So I don't know how long that period could take. It could take two weeks, it could take a month. Once that person's put together, it kind of depends on what the county commissioner's schedule looks like. So I had sort of given this board the idea that I think at a minimum, the, the timeframe you need to set aside is somewhere between that 60 and 90-day window. And our end, the local Board of Health's end, recruiting 30 days, selecting. And keep in mind, and I, I think we've covered this before, the selection process and the interview process is all set up in an open, public meeting forum. So like we did with the health officers, there will need to be questions being asked that are the same for each person, each candidate. That's done in an open, open, public meeting forum. So you put those two pieces together, along with the backend, that once this local Board of Health selects the successful applicant, that the county commissioners will need to do a two-thirds vote to approve whoever that applicant is in order to add them on. So 60 to 90-day window is sort of what I've been saying for a while, if that helps.
And, and just one last question, James, the advisory board is not on the same timeline, is it?
So the advisory board, when this first came out, Dr. Cleary, the health advisory board was placed there and it got changed as the statute sort of went along. The health advisory board would only be in effect in one circumstance. And we're not in that now because the only way that would come into effect is if the local Board of Health was consisting of complete and total legislative authority, such as the county commissioners, and they had had a board in place prior to July of last year. So in our circumstances, that is not a viable option in terms of the county commissioners being the sole three members of the local Board of Health. So the health advisory board is irrelevant related to what we are doing now.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, um, so I don't see anywhere in the, in this chapter 24690. What happens if we do not select the new members or have the correct composition of the Board of Health?
So there, there, that's the interesting part about both the statute and these rules, councilwoman, is there's no identifiable remedy related to a failure to comply. But I can tell you this much, I don't want to be in a position where we're going to figure that out because I think the reality is, if this board is not compliant by July 1st, I think there may be a right for individuals to bring an action against the board for failing, failing to comply. So, but in terms of what that remedy is, nobody's identified. I haven't heard anybody comment on that with any particularity. In fact, one of the questions I heard at the Washington State Board of Health meeting yesterday was that question got asked and they basically said, we don't know, we just know you need to be in compliance, so. Commissioner Lindy, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I know that if, I'm sorry, I just have one more point. I know that if city council, if, if the city council can't find a city council member to fill an empty seat, then it will go to county commissioners to fill the seat. Maybe if we can't figure it out, maybe the state Board of Health would have to do it, I hope, I don't know.
We, we have to, we have to keep in mind, obviously, I, I think the goal is just to make the efforts to be compliant. There is a piece of it that we've talked about sort of tangentially before, that we may not be a full board with all members based upon the tribal representative piece. Because one thing that may come into play, councilwoman, is that the tribal representative, who is selected and appointed by the American Indian Health Commission, we may not actually have that person by July 1st. And as I have mentioned before, I think our effort to be in compliance there would be to reach out to them when we begin our recruitment process for other board members, to ask them who the individual is that they are selecting and to let us know with our intention of adding them by July 1st. But it is possible that, and I know the, when I've heard this issue spoken about by AIHC, they said that some tribal, some tribes may not have that representative prior to July 1st. We just need to hold a seat for them. But in, in effort, we need to just make sure we're doing everything we can to comply, in my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner Lindy?
And I, I guess I would just like to add, you know, I'm sorry we can't answer all the questions from our side that people are asking. But I, but I do want you to know that it is my goal, and I think it is the board's goal as well, to, Board of Commissioners, to, to have everything in place so we can, we can have that board constituted as it should be on July 1st.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just one, Dr. Cleary had mentioned, we need to appoint three new board members, I believe, isn't it? We need to appoint two new board members and then the tribal person is the third board member. We're not the one appointing that one, though, the other entity is appointing that one, is that correct?
That would be, that would be correct, Dr. Attaberry. This, this board will recruit, and again, it goes back to in terms of what the county commissioner's final resolution looks like. But as I've said before, that where, if our choice is, and the county commissioner's choice is to add three to this board, two actually will be ones that will go through that process. The third one- The third one is the tribal representative, and they are selected by AIHC. And they are an automatic appointment. That that one is not set to the approval and the appointment of the county commissioners. That one is completely separate from that. They they essentially, AIHC identifies who their selected individual is. They are automatically appointed, and there there is no need for any further action from anybody other than they're now on the board.
And so just to follow through on that point, if we were compliant in a in appointing two new members, and the only part of it that we haven't been compliant with is the Native American appointal, appoint person. I imagine it would be difficult to bring action against the board for the Native Americans not having appointed a member because that's their own process and their own timeline.
I I would agree with that, other than I think this board's responsibility is what I've described before, which is to identify through letter during the recruitment process submitted to AIHC, requesting that they provide us with their applicant pursuant to statute. I think if we have done that as a local board, we have added the two members, we are waiting on AIHC to give us their member. I think we will have done everything we could possibly do in that regard, and we we would be in compliance. I I would think it'd be difficult for anyone to challenge us if we had taken those efforts.
So in that case, we have about 105 days from now, and we should be able to get that process done, I would imagine, assuming the county commissioners come up with their process by which they want to select them in the, say, next couple of weeks by the time they meet again. So I mean, it seems like a doable timeline. I don't think that's impossible.
Yeah, and I, my intention in this process over the last three months is really not to be to the point where I think it's impossible, but sort of just make sure everybody understand what all the pieces are to get the parties moving in the right direction. I I do believe at this point, if the if the board of county commissioners come up with their resolution or ordinance within the next two weeks, we can still meet the timeline, but just keep in mind, every week or two we wait, it gets tighter and tighter. And and with regard to the tribal representative, again, my recommendation is at the time that we begin that recruitment process that we are required to do under these rules related to the other two individuals, that's when we send the letter. So we sort of send it out, you know, 60 to 90 days prior to July 1st, in an effort to sort of be in compliance.
The other two commissioners can't speak for Commissioner McKinney. However, I would imagine they're aware of the tight timeline that we're under so that they can try and be compliant.
Yes, sir. We are, and as Commissioner Ladon said earlier, that, you know, we are in the process of working on that. I I expect it to be done very quickly.
Great.
And if I may, Dr. Atterbury, you mentioned something interesting, the distinction between i- if the board of county commissioners chooses to add three members, that two would be appointed and one would be a tribal representative. But that again would meet the the intent of the bill, which was to have equal non-elected official members and equal electeds. So as long as I think we're well-intentioned, that that would meet the criteria. Thank you.
Great.
All right. Commissioner Lindy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just have, I've got one more question for James. It just occurred to me. On the tribal, you know, as you look at the of the the rules of law now, obviously, they're looking for a balance between elected and non-elected. That's that's a primary goal of the new rule, of the new law. But with a with a tribal representative, there's no statement. So what if the tribal representative happens to be someone who's a member of their council? Is that an issue?
Well.
About that till just now?
I I guess, I guess I would say this, the tribal representative, it it identifies that that individual can be from any of the three categories that are listed as non-elected. So that I I'm pretty certain that's how that language reads. See if I can find it here real quick. Yeah, so look, look on the same page that we're on. The last sentence right before subsection three, a tribal representative is described in the subsection may serve in any of the three non-elected member categories as defined in this chapter if the representative meets the requirements of the category. So I think the answer would be, Ladon, that that based on the language of the rules and the statute itself, I think it would have to be a non-elected member. But again, we're gonna be in a weird position if AIHC says our person is an elected person. So my hope is, AIHC has been educated and been educating each other related to this concept that fitting into one of the three non-elected member categories.
James, I guess not to get overly technical, and I'm not a lawyer, but they'd be elected in a separate nation. So from a sovereignty standpoint, they wouldn't be elected in the state of Washington.
Yeah, I I would agree with that, and I think that argument could be made. But I guess I was trying off the cuff, think of how to answer Commissioner Lindy's question. I think I think the intention is probably to have a non-elected person as it relates to sort of civil government as opposed to tribal. But nonetheless, I I guess that's a way of working through it. There's no clarification on that, Commissioner Lindy, related to who they can or who they can't. I I I think AIHC is gonna make their selection, and I think that's who we need to add, frankly.
Well, and of course, it does say that AIHC makes that choice, and AIHC says, we're gonna use the tribe selects. Yeah.
Yeah. We we cannot end up with a majority, an elected majority. So that would fall into the whole majority rule. We'd have to hire another, put on another person. It could go on forever.
It could. All right. Any other comments or questions? Do you have a further question or anything, Commissioner Lindy?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to Guama and Sean McGee.
Good evening, everybody. So I gave a little bit of a presentation a while back on the Lower Yakima Valley groundwater management area that the Yakima Health District is part of the Guama Implementation Committee. There's been some recent developments with the implementation committee and some of the initiatives that we're doing. So just gonna update you on most recent one that we're working on. So we've, in partnership with the Department, State Department of Health and the State Department of Ecology, have identified up to 75 households that are within the Guama and are part of the long-term groundwater monitoring program that Department of Ecology has implemented that consistently are affected by high nitrates in their drinking water. So we've, again, partnered with the State Department of Health as they approached us with some additional funding to supply potable drinking water to these households within the groundwater monitoring network. So what this looks like is this is a pilot project that we have funding secured through the end of 2022 to start delivering potable water to these households beginning in April. With the hope and the, you know, outreach and and work that hopefully this project goes beyond its pilot stage, beyond 2022, and continues to grow and to be able to serve more people with potable drinking water. And eventually, maybe other options to mitigate high nitrates in the groundwater, maybe nitrate filtration systems, things like that. So the funding is coming from State Department of Health, foundational public health funding, flowing through the Health District, which we're working with a water delivery service company to deliver this water, it's like the five-gallon jugs, and then they set up the water dispenser and and the the home. So we're working on, DOE is working on sending out letters and postcards to all the residents who are part of the groundwater monitoring network to get their responses to see if they are interested in this service. It's at no cost to them. We're hoping to get the post, postcards with their their names, addresses, and their information back to the Health District so we can inform Culligan Water Delivery give them the information they need so they can start these deliveries. So we're not, we don't have any of the contact information or addresses or anything quite yet, as people who join the groundwater monitoring network were promised that they would, their info would remain within Department of Ecology. So Ecology is doing the outreach on behalf of us to, number one, get permission to, for us to have their contact info and to sign up for the service. So we're really excited about the immediate impact this is gonna have for some of the folks that do have high nitrates in their drinking water. And we're excited about the possibility of expanding this in the future. And we know that this isn't the the long-term solution. This is immediate action, so to to provide this clean water while the implementation committee is implementing other initiatives to recover the aquifer, to find solutions for, permanent solutions for clean drinking water, which, you know, is an array of of different things, such as new wells, could be septic systems, could be expansion of public utilities to high-density areas in the Guama. And then identifying contamination sources to mitigate those to help recover the aquifer. So there's a wide range of projects that are being implemented, but this one we felt needed to be immediate to to provide that clean water to these folks. So wanted to update you on that, and I'll pause here for questions, because I have another update, update on a different matter as well. But any questions on this project that we're participating in? Let's see, a couple hands go up.
Okay, Dr. Cleary.
So I I I think there've been some potential sources of contamination identified in the I I was under the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the implementation committee had actually made some recommendations. So I was wondering if there's been any change in nitrate concentrations over time that can be related to some of the measures that were thought to reduce contamination.
From what we know from the groundwater monitoring network, there's a lot of the nitrate levels flux up and down. So we are targeting the ones that are consistently above the the drinking water standard. But yes, you're you're right, there there are several agencies, South Yakima Conservation District, W, Washington State Department of Ag, work closely with a lot of the agricultural companies, farmers, and everything in the Guama area about their nutrient enhancement plans, or, you know, how they, how they dispose of all that stuff to ensure that they're not contributing to the contamination a- as much as possible, so minimizing that as much as possible. I don't work on that part of it as much as I do on the drinking water well and and septic side of things or wastewater side of things. And we are exploring those as well, you know, are some of these septic systems outdated, installed without permit or, you know, without any oversight or regulatory authority? With the concern that they'd be too close to drinking water wells that would lead to potential contamination as well. Maybe not to the aquifer as a whole, but to to that and that drinking water, so that well itself certainly would be a concern. So I I don't know if that's, that answers your question or not.
Well, I guess I'm I'm just curious whether theoretically some of these issues could resolve themselves with above-the-ground interventions without having to, you know, pipe in or or provide water to to everyone. Is there a calculation of the the timeline by which this may, you know, clear on its own?
That is current, one of the things we're currently trying to figure out and and identify. So those are good questions that I can pose at the next implementation committee meeting and bring back more information for you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I I can add a little bit more on that, too. A lot, a lot of the mitigation measures in the implementation plan are long-term measures. So it's gonna take time for the nitrate levels to go down. So once those mitigation measures are implemented, then yeah, then we'll, we'll see in, you know, five, 10 years what what those levels have gone down. So so some of these other items that Sean's talking about are more immediate. What do we do until we can get those groundwater levels, nitrate level decrease?
Ms. Duval and then Dr. Atterbury.
I just, I don't know if I missed it. Did you give a number on the potential number of households that are gonna be eligible for this pilot program?
Currently, there are 75 residences that have been identified as consistently being above the drinking water standard for nitrates.
Thank you.
We don't know how many people are going to sign up that will know more once the the letters and postcards are are mailed out by Ecology. And Ecology is calling these households prior to those letters being mailed to give, number one, make them aware. And number two, give them some, you know, one-on-one education and outreach to hopefully, you know, build a relationship and gain trust and and increase participation.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Where again was this at?
Well, it's, it's it's all over the Guama. Yeah, it's, it's not really centralized in one location within the Guama. It's kind of spread out.
I'm just concerned about the residences maybe not being able to read or or read English. Will there be outreach in Spanish as well?
Yes, there will be, all communications will be developed in English and in Spanish, and there will be follow-ups to those to all households to ensure that they receive the postcard and are understanding what it's asking.
Lillian, do you mind just sharing again what what our goal is in terms of communication and the partnership approach we're taking?
Yeah, so through the Yakima Health District, we'll actually be leading the outreach and communication efforts for for this work moving forward. So that is something that we'll be very cognizant of, especially knowing that in the lower valley, we do have many individuals who are Spanish-speaking, so we're gonna be very intentional about how we develop communications and actually redevelop some of the education materials to make sure that they're easier to comprehend. So we'll be doing a lot of work around, centering this around the community that we're wanting to serve.
Thank you. Dr. Atterbury.
Yeah, Sean, just a quick question and a point. Knowing that I live in a rural part of the county and knowing that the trust in local and state government isn't as highest that it's ever been right now, how do we help people understand the benefit of getting tested? I I can imagine there's a lot of sites where potential contamination exists, and people won't mention it because they don't want to get tested, as they don't want to get labeled as a potential contaminant, even though it might be in their best interest from a drinking water standpoint. So I guess how do we go about educating people that it's in their best interest to do testing so that we get accurate testing and and see how large the problem is?
Yeah, it, well, one thing that we're doing is we're going back. We've talked to Yakima County Public Services and some of the education outreach that they've done before to get a feel of what's been successful versus what what wasn't successful. And obviously, we'll be communicating, you know, what are the negative effects of high nitrates in drinking water, especially, you know, in terms of women who are pregnant, infants, the elderly, and what negative impacts those could have on their health or their family members' health. And we're also, you know, we're not, we're not, we're gonna make it clear that we're not coming after anybody. We're not you know, saying, oh, your your water's contaminated, you have to drill a new well to to avoid, you know, these high nitrates. What we're, we're taking the approach of To, to avoid, you know, these high nitrates. What we're, we're taking the approach of, you know, we want to serve you and we want to bring you clean water. With the understanding that a lot of the mitigation measures we're working on with the implementation committee are going to take time. So here's a more immediate remedy to, to get us through until we start seeing the results of a lot of these. Long-term initiatives.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Andre.
After you, Lillian, please.
I just wanted to add that that's something that we're, we're, we know is going to be a barrier definitely for, as, as any government agency or, or a government official. So we are planning on working with community-based organizations and working with community members to actually go out and provide this information and education. We've noted, especially, we've learned a lot from our work with COVID, that peer-to-peer education is one of the best models to make sure that we can. Get information to people the way that they want to receive it.
Yes, I was just going to add, Dr. Adderbury, that this, this isn't the first time that there have been initiatives to, to work on this issue of remediation of nitrates. But they haven't actually, even when things were offered for free, they haven't really been adopted by many local folks. So we are trying and during this process to, from an equity platform standpoint, determine whether it's mistrust of government. Concerned that, and again, to be honest, sometimes there's concern that someone's adding a more complicated system to your well, and then there's concerns about what happens long-term if there's costs. Or if it's a general misunderstanding about the potential dangers of high nitrate contamination. So we, we're attempting. To really create a relationship with the community so we can understand better what we can do to help change this issue.
I guess I can just imagine every one of my neighbors saying, I don't want a meter on my well, Andre. So that's what I'm, I'm really getting at. I mean, if. If you're going to be non-metering and we're helping them facilitate drilling or picking up some of the cost of drilling a well. They'll probably be all for it. If they're going to be throwing meters on, they're going to, all of us are going to say, I don't think I want any part of that, you know, for, for whatever reason.
Yeah, you're actually touching on something very interesting that we don't often talk about in environmental health, which is something I think maybe we can address in future. Discussions or spotlights, which is that this is a largely very independent state. Where people who are independent homeowners have the right to manage their property as they wish. So. We, we stand at arm's length, if you will, in terms of what is expected in terms of safety. We're here to assist, but we cannot direct or, or make, make happen certain things on people's properties, which is the, the, the way of the people. That's what they want. But again, we're. We're trying to find a balanced approach and educational approach and a supportive approach.
Well, I'm sure if there was a grant picking up part of the portion of the well, a lot of people would take part in that. So that would be my recommendation, but that's just my thought.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lindy.
Yes, I, I wanted to kind of respond at least in part to some of Dr. Clary's questions, just because I have some background in agriculture. You know, they're really, as, as the, the Guam, the committee's looking at this, they, they're really looking at three different principal sources of the nitrate. Contamination that, that comes from. Basically fertilizer practices in agriculture. It has to do with, you know, septic tanks, septic systems, many of them which were. You know, old, basically a very shallow and then effects of agri, animal agriculture. And on the, on the. On the fertilizer side, the commercial fertilizer side of farming, there have been a lot of practices there that are already in place that have, you know, over the years that are improving the situation. Such as, you know, not over application of fertilizer, different irrigation practices, which are helping to, you know, with some of that from that side. From the. From the animal agriculture side of things, I can tell you that. Every livestock operation has to have a farm plan, which kind of dictates how much they apply, you know, animal waste as fertilizer to their lands at an agronomic rate. Meaning that you don't put more on the land that it can actually use for the crop that you're going to plant there. And, and then you have the septic systems and some of those even are actually within current city boundaries. And so there is. But, but there has been some mitigating. You know, actions that have been taken place already, but there's, there's more to do from the Guam list of recommendations and. And as Sean, I think, had said earlier, it takes time for these things to take effect. They are long, longer-term solutions. And I, and I'm wondering, there was somebody who was kind of asking about the Guam territory and I think. Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that this particular Guam is the lower Yakima Valley on the east side of the Yakima River. Does that sound right?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, it's a basically around, from around the, this, I believe, east of Parker, Parker area, just. The other side of the Union Gap. The east side of the river, all the way down to. I don't know if it's quite to Grandview. Is it Grandview?
Yeah.
I believe it's all the way down to Grandview. Yeah, to the, to the county line.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this?
No, just to, if I could just respond, Mr. Lindy, that's exactly what I was thinking. I think the agricultural community has actually. Put a lot of effort into this and a lot of expense and it is getting into many years that people have changed their practices. That's why I was curious about. Whether we're seeing any change in nitrate concentrations over time. Because if the actions are, are working, then hopefully they're decreasing. If it wasn't the agriculture contributing, then, you know, may, we may not see any change. And so there's some information to be obtained by, by looking at those changes over time.
And that is exactly what the long-term groundwater monitoring network that DOE has implemented is, is meant to do. I know it's more, more recent implementation. It might be. Almost a year old now. So they're getting their baseline data sampling and then they'll be sampling periodically, you know, for the long term. So. I, I think we'll, we'll be starting to see some data points on what you're look. Wondering about, you know, what, what's the effect over time then since, you know, our agricultural industry has started implementing these changes. You know, hopefully we, we start seeing a reduction because it has been a few years. But we'll have more data as time goes on through that monitoring network.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
I do have one more quick update for the board if we're done talking about Guam. Okay, so some of you may have heard recently, there's been any increasing attention around a. PFOS contamination. Issue up near the Yakima Training Center. Wanted to update the board that the Health District, myself. Is involved in the discussions about future actions on. What we're going to do in the meantime. Relieve people who have affected drinking water wells. Near the training center and then what the long-term solutions are going to be. It's pretty. New and the, you know, this is the. Department of the Army is, is the lead agency in this as it's their, you know. Facility that they were concerned about having contamination on their property and then they. Started inquiring around their name, to their neighbors to test their wells. And about fifty percent of the wells tested have come back as over the EPA's lifetime limit. Levels of PFOS in their drinking water, which is seventy parts per trillion. So now the, the discussions are happening of, of what's our short-term solutions and then what are our, what are our long-term permanent? Fix is going to be. I know that the Army is supplying bottled water delivery to the folks. Whose wells have tested above the limit. And I've been in discussion with them about that. And then there are a couple of meetings coming up. That the Department of the Army is hosting, one of them being specifically for the residents whose wells have tested. Above the limit. And then another one that's an open public meeting, which I will be attending both of those meetings to assist in any Q and A's that are going on. Our future involvement will be to. To, to keep answering the, the questions of the public education and outreach. Also to communicate with the Army, you know, we get the complaints like when you have something wrong with your water, your septic, your food, who do you call? Health District. So. We can kind of gauge what's happening by when we receive complaints or, or we get. Members of the public calling and asking questions. And that stuff that we can bring to the Army that says, you know, we need to, we need to step it up in this area. We have more people that need to be tested. We need more water delivery delivered more often. People are running out. Which has been some of my conversations of late. So. We are involved and it's pretty. Preliminary as to a lot of the specifics around this and. Yeah, I haven't been. Building completely by the Army what these meetings are going to be. The agendas of these meetings specifically, but I can update you all as I know more.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions on this?
Sean, is the Army owned up for any mitigation of the project in terms of their owning the problem?
Well, they're, they're providing free water delivery to all the people who have tested. Over the limit, they are continuing. To explore future testing needs for other folks. I think they, they started off a half-mile radius or I guess not radius, a half-mile distance from. The southwest property line of the training center. So that East Silla area. And then they expanded to three-quarters of a mile. And as these results continue to come in, these testing results continue to come in. They'll keep expanding their, their testing area. To really find who. Who individually has an affected well and then how far has this problem, you know, spread or, and how fast is it spreading?
Second question, is there a chelation agent or some way of cleaning the water or is it just time?
I gotta be honest with you. I'm still educating myself on PFOS quite a bit. I suspect in a week or two I'll be an expert, but. As of right now, I'm, I'm not sure what mitigating measures are. The Army did say, mentioned the possibility of, of treatment systems being installed. So I, I imagine there is a, a specific treatment. To, to the water to, to bring it below the drinking water limit.
Dr. Adderbury, I'd just like to add the, the issue of PFOS is a, a fire retardant issue is, is something that's happening nationwide. Its use was very common and, and now we're seeing contaminants all across the United States. So I think this is a, a national issue. I don't even know if we're at a point where it, it's relatively new in terms of being such a concern. And so the long-term impacts, I think, are unclear. But again, I'm not an expert.
Yeah, also to expand, Dr. Adderbury, Airway Heights had this problem in their community water system seven years ago. And so they had a purchased water from the city of Spokane. And just about a week or two ago, they were actually finally able to go back onto their own wells. And so it was a seven-year, seven-year recovery.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Adderbury, I have a real quick question. Your background is green. Are you getting ready for St. Patrick's Day? No?
That should be my background.
You're on, you're on.
Yeah, really.
I'll work on that.
Well.
Commissioner Anderson, when I had the overhead lights on and the ring light for Instagram, it was giving me some weird background on all of you. So. I killed the overhead lights and I've just got the ring light like I'm making the video of my favorite musics or whatever.
Okay, all right. Well, okay, well, that's, if we're done with that topic, we'll move on to see the incident management. Retention plan and Director Fresco.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, and thank you for your time. I wanted to bring to the attention of the board a serious staffing issue that we're facing. It's something that's emerging in real time for the Health District and has everything to do with COVID. And it's pretty serious. It's something that Ryan and I have been discussing in theory for a number of months, but it's actually happening at really lightning speed now. And that is the very real potential to lose many of our directors to new jobs with vastly higher salaries. Accordingly, and I'll give you background certainly, but accordingly, I'll be asking the board tonight to approve making the temporary COVID-related. Increase permanent. The goal at the Health District throughout COVID and certainly post-COVID, as we enter a recovery phase, is to retain the knowledge, skill and commitment of our incident management team. I'm extremely proud of how we work together. We haven't lost members of the team. We've been committed to supporting the staff and in turn, serving the community. And so we're strongly committed to beginning the transition phase from COVID response in a disaster to COVID recovery. And that's very exciting. But there is some background I'd like to share on this issue. If you recall, the board approved a temporary COVID increase for the incident management team and that's been lasting the last six months. So that was approved by the board. And it actually expires on April 1st. So rather than renew the extension, because we're still in the middle of the emergency response, I'd like to turn this into a retention opportunity. By making the increase permanent moving forward. Certainly this is a lot of information and the board deserves some background. So I'd like to give you some if you don't mind. The bottom line, and many of you may be aware of this, but the bottom line in our community and across the state and certainly the nation is that we're in a new era of employment and staffing. We lost many people in our discipline in the public health field during COVID. Many people who were at the. More mature stages of their career chose to retire. Many people left because they were burnt out. It's been a very difficult period throughout our state. Again, we've been incredibly fortunate to have a very supportive cohesive team here. We've been very lucky. But the reality is there's a huge demand now for proven experienced staff and we're seeing it real time. And in the last month, the majority of our directors have been approached for jobs. Some directors are receiving multiple offers. I share this with you. Not because anyone has made a demand. Our team has been extremely polite and extremely committed to the mission. But the reality is that people are being offered quite a bit more money than they're making currently with increased benefits and often easier jobs. So that is a tremendous concern for us. It's hard to ignore attempting offers. Because they're being offered repeatedly. And again, our directors are committed to the mission, committed to serving the community, committed to serving the staff. And it's wonderful that they are acknowledging their interest in staying. But the reality is that we have the real possibility of losing them if we're not competitive with sounds. We're also entering into a new era of remote work and I share this with you because it's unthinkable. If we look back three years ago before COVID to say that people would be offered a hundred percent remote employment. It would have been no standard in public service certainly. But that's what's happening now statewide. Our profession in public health is, is, is offering a hundred percent remote employment to people. The State Department of Health is actively seeking people throughout the state to work a hundred percent remote into the future. And that's full-time employment. So we've actually lost staff to the Washington State Department of Health who have taken jobs for vastly more money. And they're working a hundred percent remotely from home. That is a huge sea change in terms of the work that we do. In the old era, if you wanted to make a dramatically increased salary in this state in public service, you had to move to the Olympia, Seattle area. That was the condition and you had to deal with traffic and higher prices, certainly higher costs for homes. That is not the case now. The new area, a new era is you can live anywhere in the state and certainly in Eastern Washington, what we're seeing. Are people who are being paid Western Washington salaries and living in Eastern Washington. Dr. Adderbury, do you have a question, sir?
No, please finish. I just have a comment after you're done, Andre.
Thank you so much. So in the new era, we're seeing dramatic offers of, of very large increases in salary. For people to remain in Eastern Washington, to work remotely, to receive improved benefits and frankly, to work from home. And on top of it, save money and commuting, which is really a, a dramatic change from what we had seen before. And it's now happening almost daily. The issue though is not just competition for capable staff that, that concerns me. It's that retention is vital. We are a small department and we have relied heavily on a small team to do incredible work on behalf of this community. Our goal is to transition to a COVID recovery process that honors the fact that we're still. Our goal is to transition to a COVID recovery process that uh, honors the fact that we're still uh, concerned about COVID, but also we want to uh, start to address the root cause issues that have been so difficult for people throughout COVID. Uh, to do so, we have to have an experience capable and skilled and committed team of directors who support our staff as they enter and support the community. Uh, and the reality is if they leave, I think it will be very difficult to attract people to Yakima. It'll be difficult to replace them uh, because in a competitive job market with easier jobs, frankly, I think it would be hard to um, offer the type of pay that people being are offered uh, around the state uh, from other agencies. It's that serious. We also have an expanded portfolio at the Akama Health District. We have hired more staff during COVID. We've got more programs to manage now. We certainly are trying to, as you heard earlier, partner on community initiatives that are pressing. Uh, not just water or communication to disenfranchised communities. There are many things that we're talking about, uh, even at the health district. Uh, mental health issues, certainly issues around addiction. Uh, we anticipate many, many new projects and community investments, uh, and we need to have capable staff to reach that. But the bottom line is in order to do that, we have to maintain a management team to be successful at this transition. You you really deserve justification from us about why, and I'll I'll get to that shortly. But the reality is that we have increased pay statewide that's being offered very, very easily currently. We have one hundred percent remote job opportunities where people can leave anywhere they want in the state. We have more competition for talented staff because the talent pool is smaller. Um, and ironically, West Side wages have now become the standard for what people are are offering for employment. I think that I've spoken enough at this point. I I'm hoping that Ryan can address some of these issues because Ryan has looked at comparables and research, and I'd like to share that.
Let's let uh, Dr. Atterbury uh, make his comment first.
Okay, very good.
Uh, first, I just wanted to, you know, um, state that you have an amazing team, uh, Andre and and you. It shows through all the time. I mean, all aspects of this governmental agency work. They function at a high level. You can look at the data, you can look at the outcomes, you can look at whatever you want. And and you almost fall into a category like Bill Belichick in the New England Patriots, you know? All of his talent is constantly being stolen away from him because people say, well, I want I want that same success.
Did I rip the arms off?
Yeah, I know, but I mean, it's true, and so it's hard. Uh, I think that when you, when you're from a small community, you don't offer some of the same, you know, dynamic living situations as maybe a larger city does. It's hard to retain people. And so I I mean, I and and in this new remote environment that COVID has taught us all that we that we can work remotely. I mean, good luck trying to recruit, you know, retain people in the future. It's gonna be a challenge. So I I just, I I kind of restate what you're already stating and say, it is hard. It is going to be challenging. We do need to keep up with competitive benefits, packages, pay arrangements, everything. Because if we get brain drained from Yakima, you are not going to replace those people very easily. I would just, I would just state that over and over again, and I can tell you in my own field as a physician, we see it all the time. A talented physician comes here and a talented physician leaves here, and it's 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 upsetting and and uh, you you want more for your community. So so I just, I appreciate you bringing up the point because it's critical that we talk about and we make it competitive. Now, you're not going to keep everybody. That's impossible. Ask Bill Belichick, you know, they go all the time. But with that said, you can at least make it, you can make a fair fight out of it. And I just, uh, I would strongly support whatever we can do to retain the staff that you've put together because they really work cohesively well together.
Thank you, and Ryan, and then I'll make a comment after that.
Yeah, so what, one thing that I just wanted to point out was in two thousand eighteen, we started setting the uh, the foundation, the infrastructure for being able to move to the next level as a as a health district, uh, so that we can bring on, bring on new programs and so that we can do community needs assessments, and then that we can do what the community needs us, needs from us. But before we, you know, we can do all the community needs assessments that you want, but if you don't have the infrastructure in place, you can't do it. And so we started building that, this management team. We started um, making some new positions at the health district. And and then COVID hit, and so we're just about at the point where we're ready to move forward in in a new direction of the health district, and when COVID hit, um, we we kind of had to step back and and take care of COVID. But now that the activity in COVID has slowed down, we're ready to move that next level. And it's perfect timing because we do have the funding um, for public health. We, you know, we do have the infrastructure in place. Uh, but then we discovered that we have a serious issue. We're starting to lose staff. Uh, we've lost staff to state agencies. We've lost staff to um, to local organizations. And so we need to make sure that we're that we're properly compensating um, our staff. And so what I did is I I took a look at at what at some of our organizations that are taking our our staff, how much they're paying. And there's other uh, health or health jurisdictions are paying fifteen to twenty thousand dollars more for similar positions. Uh, state agencies that, like I said, we've lost some, some staff too, and we also have some state agencies, such as Department of Ecology, Department of Health, Department of Labor and Industry, that are actually actually recruiting some of our management team. They're paying twenty-five percent more. Uh, the city of Yakima for similar positions um, in in management are paying thirty-five percent or even higher more. They have school districts and ESD educational school districts that are twenty to forty percent more. And this last, about two weeks ago, Memorial Hospital announced that they're paying their their nurses five dollars more an hour, plus giving a thirteen thousand doll- dollar bonus. And so we we know that we, and then we've even had one organization that was offered a fifty percent increase to one of our management team. We know that we can't necessarily meet, you know, the highest, but if we need to be competitive, you know, so we need to be up there. We we want to make sure that we're we're showing commitment to our our staff and al- and also that we um, offer competitive compensation.
Yeah, if I can uh, just uh, uh, comment, uh, we're having that same issue at the with the county. Uh, we've uh, had people that we have uh, paid out a class on a temporary basis, and we've found that their their workload is continuing. So uh, we've we've increased their uh, or changed their job description and 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 kept them on a permanent basis, changed that into a permanent situation as far as uh, pay scale is concerned and those kinds of things, in hopes of retaining as many people as we can, but we're, we still, like everybody else, we're still losing them mainly to private uh, companies. But uh, and the other uh, agencies around, but it's it's a hard issue to to overcome, and uh, unfortunately, uh, being a government agency, uh, as the health district is, we're hard, it's hard to compete with others who have a bigger uh, bigger purse strings and and uh, we're just gonna have to uh, you know, really put our thinking caps on and and really uh, consider how we're gonna long-term do this, because I think the era of people staying long time is over. Uh, I was just met with the facilities department the other day, uh, Wednesday morning, for instance. And about thirty of them in the, at the meeting, uh, there was twenty-eight of them that had been there, that have been in the county less than five years. And uh, so we, every department uh, is hit, getting hit with turnover. And so we're gonna have to uh, really think outside the box.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. May we uh, recognize council members, uh, buyers and developers?
So this is Councilmember Byers. I just wanted to comment briefly. First of all, that I concur with uh, Dr. Atterbury's remarks. Uh, one hundred percent, and I also appreciate Ryan's um, idea that we have a very dedicated team and we need to be as dedicated to them as they have been to the service of our community during this very difficult time. It is probably astounding to many of us that on the east side of the state, we will now be looking at uh, west side salaries as as uh, you know, the new cost of having people here work, but it apparently is a reality. Uh, the only, the only, it's not really a concern, but just um, that we need to have assurances that we have the appropriate funding in place to move forward with making these uh, changes, necessary changes permanent. Thank you.
Councilmember Byers, that that'll be part of the, a little bit more of my presentation. So thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, I also wanted to echo on that. If if we want to keep quality employees and expect them to be the face of the Akama Health District and um, and we want them to keep building trust with our community partners and 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 in our communities, we do need to pay them better and pay them competed competitive wages. Um, my only question is, I wa- it wasn't clear to me, has this increase already been approved in the budget for this year? Or would we need to do a budget amendment amendment?
I know, that's actually the good news. Chase, would you care to to share that piece?
Yeah, we, that was kind of the first couple of things that I wanted to look at was the the fiscal piece, right? The first would be the budget and the second would be the funding. And yes, we had already included uh, this, this, the emergency pay in the twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, we assumed we would be an ICS all year long. So yeah, so you would be making something permanent um, that is already in the budget. So we have already budgeted for that, and we have identified funding forces of sources for that as well. Um, we have COVID funding going into twenty twenty-three uh, that we could use for funding as well as foundational public health investments and public health um, funding investment. So we have three different pots that that will help support any any of these races.
Yes, and if I, if I may just add, Councilmember Duval, um, we've received the COVID funding that's uh, both state and federal. Uh, the foundational public health services money is from the state legislature, so it's state monies. And the public health fund that we receive each year is also state investments in us. So the the uh, increase that we would consider basically reinforcing the capacity through salaries for us to retain staff is something that uh, that we have ample oper- options for. Uh, I I want to thank all of you for your uh,
Dr. Cleary has his hand up.
Oh, I apologize, Dr. Cleary.
Uh, well, I was just, uh, I I appreciate that uh, Ryan did that research because I also looked into that and and it looks like salaries uh, for people in public health that have gone roughly about twenty-five to forty percent. And so I guess my concern is I I don't have a good handle on um, what this emergency uh, increase in pay was and whether that will even put a dent in the increases that are being offered, and will will that actually adequately address this? Or do we need to make additional steps beyond that?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cleary. I think that's a great point. I think that this, because as uh, Councilmember Duval asked and because Chase pointed out that this is already built into our budget, I think it's a a timely and and appropriate step. Uh, it reinforces, as you all said, a commitment to our directors. I think that there needs to be a long-term retention plan in place because again, I don't anticipate this ending, this issue of people being interested in in our talented workforce. Uh, and it also brings up the 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 other issue is if we can solidify a retention plan for our directors, we want to then turn our attention to solidifying the retention plan for our staff. Uh, again, we are a relatively small department. We, we're considered a medium department by uh, Department of Health standards, but we are really small for the large geographic area that we support. Uh, and we are a complicated community in terms of health barriers, so we ask a lot of our staff and we want to show and return a commitment to them. We also want to be able to create, as as Ryan indicated, a long-term plan to allow people to progress in their career. So a lot of times people work in a job and then there's no more opportunity and they leave. What we want to do is we've elevated that relationship where the individual is as important as the job they do. So we have been able to um, elevate people into other positions because they have the training experience to do those jobs. So we are trying to create an opportunity to find frankly, homegrown talent. People who really love being in Yakima and are committed to the citizens of Yakima, and we want them to stay as long as we possibly can have them. Uh, to address uh, Dr. Atterbury's uh, issues earlier, one of the things that's pleasant about this, it's a difficult circumstance, I promise you, but I am very, very appreciative that there are people who recognize the talent of our staff. We have elevated our directors and our staff to work very independently as the face of public health throughout this uh, disaster response. They have done an amazing job. We uh, believe in communication and support and um, cross-training. And that shows in the fact that people are very interested in our staff because we're doing a tremendous job. I think that we, I think we set the pace for um, for public health standards in rural uh, communities. And I don't see that changing. Our goal, as Ryan indicated, is that we want to be a catalyst for the types of changes that are really necessary in our community, and then we can replicate those in other communities. But the reality is that we can't do that without the staff support. Um, so I'm happy to answer any more questions, but again, I think the first step uh, that was mentioned is to reinforce our support for staff by making the temporary salary increase permanent. I think that's a good first step, and then we can certainly work on a long-term retention plan.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Wow. Hearing none. Um, any, uh, that was under new business, so we're actually at on my, on my uh, agenda, we're at the word adjourn.
Uh, well, actually.
Commissioner Anderson, this is a Councilwoman Byers. So because it is on the agenda, is it uh, and I guess, Mr. Elliott, that's the question for you, because it is listed on tonight's agenda. Is this an item that can be, that action can be taken on this evening?
Yeah, I believe the agenda in fact had.
It's a decision.
It had board input, it had board decision listed on here, so first topic was identified, but also calling for a board decision. So yes, it can be done um, and and be fine, Councilwoman Byers.
That was, that's my missed, I missed that.
And Dr. Dr. Uh, Commissioner Anderson, Dr. Cleary, I think had another question.
Uh, well, I don't want to take away from uh, Ms. Byers' uh, thunder there. I I think she was about to make a motion, which I
Yes.
That's what I was going to do. And uh, so I I will defer it to you and then I'll be happy to second.
Thank you. So um, I would move uh, that the board approve making the temporary increases permanent.
Second?
Uh, second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Yeah, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Ryan, would you take a poll, please?
Yes, if you're in favor of the motion, please state yes. If not, please state no. Dr. Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember Byer?
Yes.
Councilmember Duval?
Yes.
Dr. Atterbury?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
The vote is six to zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you much.
Well, if I may take a moment, Commissioner Anderson, um, I want to thank the board for their commitment to our team. I want to thank the board for their uh, willingness to support us in a difficult time and also to recognize that really this is we are looking literally at the two-year anniversary of the beginning of the COVID response. So this has been a tremendous Herculean effort on behalf of the entire community. Um, but a small team um, has committed um, tremendous effort to to care for people. And this is a a recognition of their value, and I can't thank you enough for uh, supporting.
You. Any other comments?
Uh, Ryan, if you could put the um, budgetary concerns for the staff on for the next meeting, so it can be on the agenda, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Atterbury, and we can also be in the process of looking at long-term retention as well. Thank you.
You.
I would just like to say um, thank you to the board for the kind words and the appreciation. It's been a long, hard two years for for all of us, and um, those kind words mean more to us than you can imagine. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, and if I may, as we move into the issue of of post-COVID and the recovery efforts, the the partnership with the board is really crucial to all of us. We are going to be working on behalf of the entire community and trying to bring initiatives and opportunity to light for rural Eastern Washington and specifically Yakima. So our efforts are in partnership um, with all of you, and again, we're looking forward to working on these things.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn to the next regular meeting on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second? Is there a second?
A second.
There's been um, for a motion and a second. Uh, uh, any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Bye-bye. Good night, everyone. Good night.